Call this April 1st, Jackson County Commission Work Session to order. Roll call, Mr. Erickson.
District 1, Tim Guthrie.
President.
District 2, Jason Benable.
President.
District 3, Devin Smiller.
President.
District 4, Stacy Lut.
President.
District 5, Mr. Erickson.
I have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Jackson.
Lord God, our Father, we are truly blessed again to join together today to discuss the business of the county. We pray that you be with those men that are discussing the workings of the county and what would be best for the people of Jackson County. We pray that they will be given wisdom and discernment to know the best things for the people of Jackson County. We pray especially at this time for those armed services that are away from home during this season. We pray that they will be kept safe, that they will be returned home to their families. We do pray especially for this time of the season as we all think about Christ and His death on the cross. We pray that you'll continue to be with us, guide us, and direct us in everything we do. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, certified, United States of America, due to your role, for which the plan is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the agenda for the meeting. We have six items on the agenda. Any changes before we proceed? Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second discussion. All those in favor say aye, and opposed say nay. No one's signed up to speak this evening, so we'll move on to our discussion items in the first as regarding the community garden for the juvenile court. You all have a letter of request in your packets, and we have Mike Smith and Judge Porter with us tonight. If you'd like to, Mike, kind of tell a little bit about what it is you'd like to do.
Sure. Thank you for letting me address you, Mike. What we are asking to do is to use the lot adjacent to the juvenile court building to start basically a community service garden rather than a community garden. We want this garden for the -- to have our kids to work off community service hours. And we want this to be -- so they can be made accountable, and hopefully that it'll make a difference in their life or is not getting any deeper into the juvenile court system. Of course, we would be screening the kids that would work there, and I don't see possibly not even having to work together maybe hour at a time as a visit of probation officers. We want to keep too many from being there at one time, and certainly I put in the proposal that we not have any more than three at one time. And that would be supervised by probation officers, also by volunteers in probation. And we've asked the community -- the master gardeners here in Jackson County to help us out with this, and they've agreed that they'll be happy to help us. And we want to donate whatever vegetables are raised in it to help feed the needy, to those that need. Then possibly using the CASA agency as a vehicle for that. I think this would be great for Jackson County, it'd be great for juvenile court. I think it's something that can start out small, but that can really grow to be as big as really as a juvenile probation office can supply kids to work in it, which that's usually not a problem. We do have a good many kids that need to do such, and I just think it would be good for the court system and for the county.
Questions or comments on this?
I have one question. It says in here that all will be required to have insurance on Medicaid.
Yes, sir.
Is that the family will -- you're sure that the juvenile has insurance through the family?
Absolutely, through if they're Medicaid or through the family, yes, sir. Just in case any cuts, bruises, anything that may happen, we'll make sure they're covered. We don't want there to be any kind of liability issue there. And certainly if, you know, if something happens, that they're covered and we can -- they can get medical help, you know, as soon as they can. And we would have a -- we also, I put in there that we're going to have a family member there on site when they work.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I think it could be a pretty positive thing for the young folks as far as, one, learning something and also giving them something to kind of get involved with. And as far as the commission, really, all we need to do is give them permission to use that site. Is everybody familiar with that little piece of -- or that plot that they're looking at and trying to kind of actually in front of the juvenile office, I guess, between juvenile office and the apartment up there? Any other questions or comments? Okay, I guess we'll get this arranged so it can get this taken care of. It says in here that you would want to start by spring of 2014. If we go ahead and do something with this, would you think that this ball would be something, or are you still planning for next spring?
You know, if you approve the use, I'd like to say speed up, just to be honest with you.
Okay. I'll see what we need to do and get that on an agenda so that we can make whatever approvals are necessary for that. Next item is Environmental Services Association, Mr. Dale Storey.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dale Storey, and I'm with Engineering Services Associates from Birmingham. Just in the background to this discussion, the Alabama Solid Waste and Recyclable Materials Management Act of the Code of Alabama requires cities and counties of the state to develop and adopt comprehensive solid waste management plans, which forecast and describe the management of the solid waste generated within that local government over a ten-year period. The solid waste plans are required before a county or municipality can grant local approval on matters related to solid waste management within their jurisdiction. That includes disposal, recycling, collection, transport, just about any kind of solid waste management. It's also required in order to be eligible for the state's recycling grant programs. The original plans were developed or supposed to be submitted in 1990. Most were submitted in the 1992 to 1994 window, and then they were updated in 2004. ESA had the privilege at that time of developing the update for Jackson County. We would very much love to again serve in that capacity. During the last update cycle in 2004, ESA developed twenty county plans, and none of them were rejected or even returned for correction by any of them. We were very proud of that fact, that once we submitted the plan, it was approved almost without conflict. And we would very much like to be able to counties that take this plan and the county has recently sent out a letter to all the plans, stating that their plans are due to be renewed by September of next year, 2014. Now, we have submitted a letter to Mr. Widener outlining what our plan will contain, the process that will be required to develop the plan, and a budget cost for that. We encourage all of our potential clients to -- of course, we know that this is well into the fiscal year for our potential clients again, but we would like to get this number in your hands so that you might budget for the next fiscal year. We propose that we would get started in the fall, around October sometime. At that, we anticipate that the plan will pay six to seven months to develop. We encourage you to do this as early as possible because there are over sixty plans that are going to be submitted to ADM about the summer of next year, at least starting then. And the later that your plan is submitted, the longer it's going to take them to review. And final approval by ADM is, of course, required. I'd like to open up the floor. Any questions that anyone would have or comments?
Did you say you had an estimated cost on it, or is that something that we need to look at?
We have something here. We sent a letter to Mr. Widener, but he has a hard copy of that, but I can discuss that. We are proposing to furnish your update this year for fourteen thousand five hundred. That, of course, is with the anticipation that we would get started by the end of this year at the latest. The earlier the better, of course.
Questions or comments?
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate -- first of all, appreciate you coming up, Mr. Storey. This fourteen thousand five hundred dollar submit includes all municipalities in the county that accept Scottsboro because the previous time Scottsboro opted out. Mr. Chairman, have you heard from him later?
I haven't heard back from him. I'll follow up this week and see if they've come up with anything, how they want to proceed.
I also spoke with the lady in the child's office, and they said if Scottsboro did decide to opt in, that wouldn't be a whole lot more, about two thousand more dollars than what was included before that, so we'll get a block from Scottsboro. And Mr. Storey said this is a -- and I know Mr. Porter was involved with the current two, I believe, on that current report.
Not the first, second.
Second. This is really something for, you know, the entire county. From talking with some individuals that work with ESA also, this is normally just build out, you know, go to each town or municipality based on population as far proportion of power of the county of the plan. So, you know, it's -- the county's involved in solid waste pickup, which, you know, we handle it, I think Mr. Storey fell into it. It's got to do with everybody, you know, they just a solid waste department claim has to be done, it's something that matters to them.
If I may add to that, it is in the law that the counties are allowed to apportion the cost of the solid waste plan updates to the county residents or municipalities, if you will, by population percentage. Also, in the matter of Scottsboro or any municipality, the way the plans work now, and this was not as they were in the original 1990 cycle, but the way they are now, any county or any city that is under the umbrella of the county still has total autonomy when it comes to their solid waste management. In other words, Scottsboro, if they had wanted to do something like open a recycling center within Scottsboro, they could handle everything about that in terms of host government approval. And the county, you may not like this, but this is in the law, the county would have essentially no say in that. Whereas in 1990, the municipality would approve it, and then it would have to go to the county commission. But this was amended in the update to the law in 2002. So that, in essence, there really is not a reason for Scottsboro for cracking the matter and not be part of the plan within the county. But that's their call. And as I said, as Mr. Widener indicated, our 14-5 does not include Scottsboro, and I should have mentioned that, I apologize, for an additional two thousand if Scottsboro comes in, if we would do that, which I think would be more than they would -- would be less if they would pay that Scottsboro would pay if they did the wrong plan.
Do you know what their last update they used is?
No, they did not use a -- I'm not sure who did their plan, but we did not do Scottsboro.
Other questions or comments?
I've got one more. Mr. Storey, I understand that we're the elements of the middle. There's also, is there a series of public periods required to opt in, or is it one public period that you'll have to conduct during the campaign?
That's correct. When the county -- when the plan is essentially ready, gets, of course, submitted to the county for review, and then upon the commission's approval, a thirty-day public comment period is initiated. At the end of that thirty-day period, there needs to be one public period. At the end of the public period, all comments, questions, whatever, are then incorporated into the plan. It maybe doesn't change the plan, but they're at least responding to it. And then that whole package is then submitted to ADM. The county commission can then approve a resolution approving the plan, which they then adopts. And that would be the end of the process.
Is that including the six to seven month time period?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? So we just need to determine, come up with, I guess, time to do this, or if we're going to do this, what we have to do, right, regardless of the state.
Have we in the past pushed some of these calls to municipalities?
Last time we did pull out to the municipalities.
Any other questions or comments?
One other, now, Mr. Porter, you may remember my colleague Alan Murphy, who did that last update in 2004. He is still with our firm. He could not attend this meeting, but I'm acting in his stead, but he'll probably work on this plan also.
And I can just say that the last time we did this in 2004, it was a fairly seamless process. It just, it worked like it was supposed to, and we had a public hearing. No real public input, as I remember, no comments, sort of thing, or it worked well. And so it's required that it be done. We have to have the plan, whether ESA does or somebody else does, we have to do that.
I'd like to take a look if there's no objection. Let's take a look at funding options, and maybe put this on the last meeting of this month. So have to be fun with everyone, and we'll have maybe a recommendation on how to fund it at that point.
Tuesday, Thursday, will be the last meeting this month?
Twenty-second will be our last meeting. So if we can put that on the twenty-second, if there's still questions, we can table at that time, at least we'll have some information as far as how to fund it. So on the twenty-second. Thanks, thank you very much.
Mr. Storey, we'd like to offer, if you think my presence at that meeting would be helpful, I would be glad to return the request.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else to add, Philip? Anything else?
Come on up.
Thank you very much. The next item is a resolution regarding attendance for county board members. This was something that we mentioned while we were in practice last week, because one of the other commissioners or managers had presented this, but Mr. Guthrie didn't have any information on that.
Yeah, what I'd like to say is, we've had some inquiries about board members, all boards, the way a point, sending a mandatory where you can't miss no more than two meetings, a board member misses more than two meetings, it'll be up to the commission.
Consecutive meetings?
Yeah, consecutive. Two consecutive meetings, it'll be up with the commission to remove that individual from the board. Like to have it put on next week, if I'll do it.
Any questions or comments on this?
Who's going to be responsible for tallying this information?
I think it should be, you know, each -- ahead of each board. Probably just turn that in on a --
We're probably going to look at a little better job of knowing what a board thinks or maybe just a little small report from some of these boards. But I still have to, who's attending, is you think it'd be possible?
We're working on right now to give a better idea of those board appointments. As far as reports from the boards, we could look at that, maybe if they send us a quarterly report, just something, or something like that, we could ask probably for that.
That's what I think, quarterly report is the best. From each hand of each committee.
Maybe each month, maybe they can send the commission office a number of people up there and...
We've got a lot of boards in the county committee and everything else, really really take a look at all of the appointment process and what they -- as far as what you're looking at here, what, you know, they said that one county had that, what kind of authority? Can this be done across the boards, all boards, or is there some limit to what we can do? You know, Mr. Porter?
Normally, and I can't speak to a particular board, but normally the statute authorizing the boards provides for the appointment of the members of the board. But normally, there's nothing in the statute that provides for the excusal of a member of the board and not...
Yeah.
I think each one of them could resign, and I'd have to look at this, see how we could comply with the law, make sure that we don't impose a standard on a board that the law doesn't allow. But I think what can be done, we've got to be careful about it.
If we could, if you would be opposed, as you go through, maybe get that information together, and then at the next work session, we'll have us at the next work session, if it's something we can do, we can form a resolution around that, that'd be suitable.
And we'll probably only retain two boards solely appointed by the county commission. Some boards drop solely appointed.
Right.
So you can make a work.
Any other questions or comments or recommendations on this? All right. Next item, back to school sales tax holiday, Mr. Erickson.
This is an annual resolution that just authorizes that school tax holiday. It's usually the first school weekend in August. We have adjusted this resolution. It is acceptable with the commission to make this continuing, instead that we don't have to do this each year. It would just continue unless you decided to pull out of that, so it has to come before you each year.
Their issue with that, you know, Mr. Porter, could be set up.
Actually, I thought we'd done it before, but possibly not. Yeah, it would not always be continued.
Any questions or comments or information? And if the sales tax goes with how that's set up, we can still apply this, correct? The sales tax holiday, I guess it's been done in the past every time night, so. All right. Questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night. Next item is the inmate telecommunication agreement. I gave that to the end of last week's meeting for review. Questions or comments on this?
Paragraph number one, but yeah.
Different location.
Mr. Hodges pointed out, they may have a bigger place than we've got. We can take all the revenue.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I was just thinking.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions or comments on it? I think this is the one the sheriff is recommending we move forward with. Have we had a response from the area group yet, Mr. Erickson?
I just think that, you know, that I just didn't ever get this that, it was all kind of weak.
Is this the one from Sheriff Bartlett?
Yes.
And tell me again, real quick, the recruitment fee, is this based on revenue generating? This is not out of pocket upfront costs in the county, correct?
We would not pay, from what I'm understanding, we don't pay any funds out at all. And then as the equipment, we get a percentage through the top here until that equipment's paid for. And at that time, about that time is when the contract went, and then we can renegotiate because the equipment's paid for, we can renegotiate higher that the county's part of what we can negotiate out that way.
Scheduled the investment recruitment, that's just if we terminate, correct?
Correct. Right.
Yeah, if we terminate before the contract's over, then we would have to go and be prorated, we'd have to go back.
Would that be, this with how it is, this says first and second anniversaries, Mr. Porter, would that mean even beyond that first agreement, we would have to pay the fee if we go into the fourth and fifth year?
The fourth and fifth year would be under the anniversaries.
We would pay sixty percent of the total.
Right.
So up to the sixth, at the sixth year is when we would not have any fees. So where this contract is less in that timeframe, we would need to go six years to not say it, three years. We need to go six years in order to not have to pay a recruitment fee, is that the way?
And if we're going to sign a contract, that would probably lead us to a six-year deal, wouldn't it?
Yes, sure. I'd like to talk to him, Mr. Bartlett, and see Sheriff Bartlett, and kind of ask him about that.
Ask him a lot more.
About that recruitment fee as far as the three years.
See if we can negotiate a different slide or something.
Right. If we're going to go a little bit longer and see if we can do something.
From my understanding is that is, they take the number, the total amount of equipment, and divide it by months. So this ain't a set thing until they actually come down and do a...
The cost.
A cost. And then once they do, they divide that by however many months. And so, because you may have a real good month, this month, and it may go down a bit, so each month ain't going to be the same. So that may need to pay off in four and a half years, it could pay six and a half years.
But if we can negotiate a percentage drop in what's on the schedule, it'd just be better for us. If you have any other things?
Yeah. Do you have anything, Mr. Porter?
There are a couple. It provides for fifteen percent gross revenue to the county until the equipment's paid for, then fifty percent after that, which is probably pretty good. Paragraph twelve bothers me. It's pretty onerous only on the county as far as indemnity to tell me. I'd like to be able to negotiate that paragraph.
Mr. Porter, I did ask about that. And he did say that, because I brought it up, he did say that that would be the most important, I think.
Good. Much happier with it, if that applied.
Other anything else? Any other questions or comments on this? What we can do is try to set up a time later this week to get on the phone with Mr. Bartlett, Sheriff Bartlett, and go over these items we've talked about, and get a different contractor with those changes, and they'll get that contract to us. We can either put this on the agenda for next Monday night with those changes in mode on it, or we can give us our one more work session to make sure all these changes necessary are made and go forward in this preference of the commission.
I mean, I think if you thought they needed release, you know, because I have, I don't have a phone number.
Anybody else? If we can, we'll try to get these changes made and get a copy back out to you by the end of this week so that you have time for review. And again, if we need more time, we can table it Monday night, but otherwise, we'll have this. And we should have that other agreement also by the end of the week, so we'll take a look at that and be able to choose between the two. Any other comments or questions? All right. Next item is a local gas tax resolution. You all have in your packets a resolution that would request the ability to use the local three cent gas tax, the same as the state's seven cent gas tax. It would open up the use report. Right now, it's very limited in our use. We have a high demand for equipment in public works, but we can only purchase equipment out of seventy dollars. This would allow us to do that where needed. My goal would be to budget this the same as we budget our 111. And at the end of the year, any money that we have left over, we would have that free to use for equipment. I think it would be a much better budgeting situation for public works, and I'll talk with the engineer and assistant engineer and discuss this, and I think you guys are...
It would help us out from the county, for everybody, because every phone we've got has got some claims of tax, we'll accept for the seven cent, so I guess it would literally allow us to basically buy equipment or use twenty percent. The twenty percent over by materials would, this is fair enough to, you know, you might just rate and buy more equipment than the twenty percent, it would just make it a lot easier, make our funding work for us.
From an accounting standpoint, I think it would be easier because we would... From an accounting standpoint, I think it would be easier, because we would have, there'd be one less fund to have to worry about in public work.
Yeah, it would still be separate funds.
Yes. Just the usage would, whatever.
Questions or comments on this? Great. If there's not, what we'll need to do is pass a resolution in support of this, and then take the, you've got an attached draft of a bill, take that to the legislature and ask that they put that on. Hopefully, we can get that in and advertised this year, that's what I push for. If we can get this passed next Monday night, I'd like to get that to them, and hopefully get that done this year during the session. Any other questions or comments? No oppositional places on the agenda for next Monday night, or whatever. All right, move on to our reports, and Serderson?
I just wanted to bring in that the minutes for tomorrow's twenty fifth meeting are in this packet, and they've all been emailed to each of you, and just to review them, and what we have for the agenda.
Mr. Widener?
Yes, sir. Give us one of these, which I've, thanks a lot. We had, we had talked about ATR for a while, I was talking to Mr. Widener earlier, and it felt like it might work, go ahead, break it back up, this will, will, is very down to the deadline, in the late, in the final submission for things through the A-trip. If y'all see it at the bottom, I've got some hand notes on here, but if you see it at the bottom, we've got circled a suggested A-trip, round three trucks. This is the one that we currently have down, that we would like to submit an application for. Of course, we've got to decide, you know, we're probably going to start looking at this real seriously in about, about a month, but right now, we've got down, calendar thirty-three from highway seventy-two, calendar one eleven, and y'all recall, this is contingent on DOT reclassified as major plaque. We've got all that paperwork submitted to them, asking to put a resolution, trying to get it reclassified, so that one, that one's still coming up in there as far as it being eligible. Then we've, calendar forty-three is from highway thirty-five, open handicap, kind of line, and calendar five is one that Commissioner Lemon will set up, Madison County had contacted us, they're looking at doing their portion of that road through A-trip. This is a road that goes off of seventy-two and go over into U-Hope, and they're looking at doing their part of it, so our, our part's about two miles, about two point two miles, and this is nothing that's set in stone, we just wanted, this is kind of what we're looking at, and if y'all have additions, that would, number one, we got to reclassify as a major plaque before they're helping with A-trip. If y'all got any more that you want to look at, and give one of us, so we get an estimate done, it'll be by October, then hopefully, Mr. Carter's made it about the first meeting in May, we can approve that, or if happened to, then wait for Saturday, but we have to have the application in for the last day of May.
Which, there's two or three roads on this last that we didn't get approved of? How many roads have we managed to through down around two?
Yes, one of those was thirty-three, we had it.
Okay, then we had one or two other ones?
Yes, and the other one, actually, it was two portions of thirty-three that were approved.
Okay.
It broke out in two portions, classified.
Right.
It might have been major, we tried to break it out, it's approved, and I believe we also, we also had sixty-seven on there, and we've already got it approved.
Approved.
Approved, around two, three, about two. I was running up on sixty-seven, we're looking, several old box, old box covers now, and there, probably might have replaced a few of them, either county forces, so, I'd probably be wondering, we'll look those, third, that's kind of good, we'll do it too, see if, that is something we have to, we have to work with that match, I think, or two there, so a lot of those. But these three that we got, this is just a start point, if y'all have any more, we can give y'all time, and two, to give us time, because we have to have the dollar amount, give us time to go out and look at it, and give an estimate of someone for this fee, so, y'all can think about it, and just to let you know, if you get anybody.
What is the budget start date on eight?
On which one?
On eight.
On the eight?
Going up, was it eight or seventeen?
Seventeen is one.
When was it when we started?
We've already, we've done everything we can do because of the season right now, we've got the passing done, they're working, they're working on the guardrail, I'm not sure if they've got the guardrail lined up, but we have to wait until April fifteenth to put down the first layer, which is heat treatment, which is silico, and you can't do that before April fifteenth, and with good weather. And that's just a DOT spec, you know, it's kind of set in writing that we have to fight that, we can't force you to come on in here and, and eight might be another, you mentioned eight.
Eight, eight would be one for us to look at.
Yeah, it might be another one that we, that we consider, as a matter of fact, we talked about that, of course, we talked about it on some other things recently too, but we'd have to get all that part going forward, you know, like that one. But, you know, this is my idea, is we give y'all a couple weeks, I mean, four weeks or four or five weeks to look at it, and, and.
I've got a question. He's brought a program, we got, we want to go down on the brown, and, and, we pay, we gotta, 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 we gotta.
Yeah, we come out to twenty-four by the month, yeah.
I'll tell you, we're paying, we're, sure, if that's going up.
Yeah, we're gonna look there, it's all going through.
I just want to make sure I just have a deck to come out here and cover.
That's all we're doing, we didn't, do it till the end of the month.
Any other questions, anything else on that?
It's all right.
Sheriff, is that the statement? Who's on the commission, Mr. Willard? Any, any coming, Mr. Guy?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Benable?
No.
Mr. Lethmore?
No, sir.
All right. That concludes everything on our agenda. We do have the community meeting tomorrow night, six P M. at the Skyline School, but hopefully we'll have a good crowd out there, we're sharing a lot of what we've been talking about, and answering some questions, I'm sure. That concludes everything for tonight. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye, and oppose, say no.